Welcome to the September 23rd, 2014 regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, probably not tonight, and the city attorney's office and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wortman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission and not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerrys, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. Ms. Sarnapita, roll call, please.
Ms. Cruz, here. Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krenn?
Here.
Ms. Sanzicca?
Here.
Mr. Shepke?
Here.
Number two is the approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Mr. Tagle, supported by Mr. Sanzicca?
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzicca?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz, yes.
Agenda item number three is the minutes of the September 9th, 2014 regular meeting. Could I have a motion to approve? Mr. Gottlieb, support by Mr. Sanzicca?
Mr. Gottlieb?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krenn?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzicca?
Yes.
Mr. Shepke?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Edmonds?
Yes. Agenda item number four is public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there any comments for items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, zoning board of appeals report, ZBA report. Mr. Krenn.
Yes, we had one item at our ZBA meeting this month. It was a variance for setback requirement. In a nutshell, it was a home in the R1E district, which are very small lots. The setback requirement from the side was five feet, and the zoning board approved a three-foot encroachment into that five-foot setback. It wasn't unanimous. It was a five-to-two approval, and that's all we had.
Could I ask what was the opposition to it?
Well, the, on that side, there was nothing to do with the land. That was, it was a straight run, and the building was straight. There was nothing on that side to say the land was odd-shaped or anything. On the other side of the property, it was a slight angle, and it just decided that angle affected the other side.
Thank you. Next is the item six, the planning and zoning report.
I believe all the planning commission members received invitations to the Big Beaver Road pedestrian symposium. How about we email it to everybody? Okay, let me start over. The planning commission will be receiving invitations. I know we've announced it, the Big Beaver Symposium, pedestrian symposium, October 1st. The intent is to, you know, we've got a lot going on in Big Beaver the last few years. We've got Granite City and Galleria, Troy shops, and hospitals, hotels, restaurants, et cetera, et cetera. Now with, you know, we've got, you know, townhomes and lofts, half a mile, less than half a mile from Big Beaver. We've got more activity on Big Beaver. We've got more, it's more dynamic, and there's more going on, and there's a stronger relationship with Big Beaver. However, there are still limited opportunities for pedestrians to get across Big Beaver. They can get across now at the intersections of major roads, as well as three mid-block crossings. And, you know, I have a, my office overlooks Big Beaver, and at lunchtime on certain times of the day, I see people doing the, you know, the hundred-yard dash for your life across Big Beaver to go from this side to the Champs, or TGI Fridays, or what have you. So, the intent is to solicit input from property owners, workers along Big Beaver, stakeholders, residents, get their input, and come up with, discuss best practices, and come up with a plan for getting people across Big Beaver, and improving pedestrian maneuverability along and across Big Beaver. So, it's, I invite everyone to come and participate. There's two times on October 1st, it's a Wednesday, you can come at 11:30 to 1:30, or you can come between 5:00 and 7:00. It's kind of drop-in style. You don't have to be there exactly at 11:30. There's going to be stations where you can flow, and you can do some reading, and then at the end, you can engage our transportation expert, Mark DeLaverne, who wrote the pedestrian plan for Chicago, as well as our city manager, Brian Kishnik, and leave your input, and we really want everyone to come and participate. So, that's the Big Beaver Pedestrian Symposium. And anecdotally, without giving you, you know, specific properties, we are having more people kick the tires on apartment and multifamily-type, literally, in the city. Not only on Big Beaver, but on Maple and in other areas. So, I think the market's finally caught up to the demand, and we've kind of been talking about it for a few years now, and the market seems to be responding. So, that's, that's good news.
Do you see these as mixed use or strictly residential?
Had some dialogue today about someone who was willing to do vertical mixed use, but typically it's mixed use, but typically it's retail in the front and the mixed use behind. You know, we're still, we're still struggling with that, you know, how does it work?
Still struggling with the work-lived-loss.
So, interestingly, thank you. Interestingly, I was, I was at my desk this morning, and I got called over, hey, a guy wants to talk with you. He's heard, he's heard good things about the planning department, and he's, he's living in a live-work unit on a certain, I won't say the street, but in Troy, in an industrial building. I went out and introduced myself to him, and he has a live-work unit in a small industrial building. He's got a second winding staircase, a second-story mezzanine. He invited me to get a tour of it, and I'll take him up on that. I'm going to take some pictures, and I'll share them with you. I think, so there is one in the city. That's, that's really cool. It's only one, but it's a start. It's, this is something that we've been talking about for a long time, and someone, someone's walking the walk.
Is he the property owner, or is he leasing it?
He's leasing it.
Okay.
Yeah, so, that's all I have.
That's great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I just add to that? I know that this, this commission has been very interested in the transit center, so I just wanted to report that at last night's meeting of city council, they unanimously approved the lease with Amtrak. And so, what that means is that they are now, we're now poised to have a grand opening. We're hoping that it'll be within 30 days. We don't know the details of that yet, but certainly we will keep you all apprised of that. So, that's good news moving forward on the transit center.
Laurie, have you heard of any efforts to, as part of the grand opening, perhaps to coordinate a trip to either Ann Arbor or Chicago or something?
There is some thought about that. I know that a lot of people have expressed an interest in being on a train ride, at least temporarily. Maybe it's to Detroit, or maybe it is all the way to Chicago. I think that the details are still being worked out, but that is something that has been raised, and hopefully...
Oh, it's a Pontiac.
It could do that as well, yeah. Then you'd be ready to go.
I think Ann Arbor would be good. Go with the Dandy kids. Just go with it better. I agree. Okay, the next item is item number seven, the preliminary site plan review. File number ST998, proposed Murray Plaza, west side of Rochester, between Banterpool and Tromley, 3385 Rochester, section 22, currently zoned GB, general business district.
Assuming you're going to do this. Yeah, it's been a while. Hopefully, I remember how to do this. So, this, this project is called Murray Plaza. It's a proposed retail development located on, at 3385 Rochester Road. It's on the, on the west side of Rochester Road between Waddles and Big Beaver. And, is the building down? No. You'll recognize it.
It's a very good.
Yeah, I haven't. Sometimes they, sometimes when an application comes in, they demo. It's a, it's a, it's an old, like Taco Bell, I think, restaurant.
It was a Taco Bell.
Big white building. It's been vacant quite some time.
Twenty years, I think, it's been vacant.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's time. It's time. So, so we have an application for a 5,000-square-foot retail building with four separate, separate tenant spaces. The zoning is GB general business. Retail's permitted by right in general business. So, our, the review that we've, that we've done, we've identified a handful of variances. So, as submitted today, planning committee, because there's variances required, we're not anticipating any action to be taken because they have to go to the zoning board of appeals as submitted today. However, based on this review and the discussion that we have this evening, they could go back and submit a site plan application that meets our zoning ordinance provisions. We could, we could, we could review it at a, at a future meeting relatively quickly. So, that, there's that option as well. So, just, just wanted to state that. The, residential's, or, excuse me, zoning on all, on all sides is commercial with the exception to the west, it's R1E single-family residential. We talked about this last meeting here, Rochester Road, how there's, you know, the, this boundary between general business and residential's been there for a very long time. It's, it's, it's wide enough that it does permit some, some, some intensity on the, on the property, that some of these uses have been here for a long time, but still, there's still, it's not wide enough that, there's got to be a design flair involved to make it, to make it fit, so that it works for the property owner, and it doesn't have, have any negative impacts on the residential. But that, that line's been there for quite some time. But just for, for the record, it is, it is single-family residential zoning. In terms of, in terms of area width, height, and setback requirements, the, the application meets all the setback requirements except the, when a budding residential, there's a 75-foot minimum setback, and this only, this application only provides 45 feet. So, what they have to do, again, we talked about this last week, you kind of got to make a decision whether to put the parking in the front and push the building back, or put the building in the back, and, you know, vice versa. In this instance, because that 75-foot requirement, you really need to push the building closer to the street, put all the parking in the back. They propose to kind of mix it, put some in the front, some in the back. Obviously, from a, from a president's perspective, as a retailer, you, we hear all the time that they want, they want parking in the front, but to make this really work and eliminate that, that variance requirement, they need to push the building up and put the parking behind. There's also a 10-foot greenbelt requirement that they don't meet because, because of the, you know, it's relatively tight, so it doesn't comply with that requirement either. In terms of parking, they provide enough spaces, but they, the ordinance only allows 50% of the parking in the front yard, and they provide a little over 50%. So, again, when they, if they put the parking in the backyard, that eliminates the setback variance, it eliminates the need for variance in that requirement as well. So, a lot of it's tied to the location of the building on the side. They also didn't provide a bicycle rack. That's easy, that's easily enough addressed. In terms of site access and circulation, we got some, some comments from our, our city traffic engineer, and there's really, there's three issues there. One, in terms of drive-by widths, the width has got to be 24 feet, and the applicant provide only 20 feet a lot behind the building. There are four parking spaces at front on Rochester that are within an existing 12-foot permanent public utility easement, so they need to be backed up a bit. And he does encourage an agreement with the property owner to the south to allow shared, shared access to the site. They don't meet the parking lot tree requirement, there's a requirement for one tree every each spaces. If they can't put the trees in the parking lot itself, you can, planning commission can grant approval to put them on the perimeter, but they're lacking, they need to provide three of those trees, they don't provide any. And in terms of, in terms of screening and front yard screening, there's no, there's no screening between Rochester Road and the parking lot. They provided a photometric plan that, that meets the requirements of the, of the zoning ordinance, although there's some, some inconsistencies in terms of what types of, specific types of fixtures are provided, but they, that's easily, easily clarified. In terms of floor plans and elevations, they weren't provided. However, we note that the floor plans and the site plan do not match in regards to sidewalk width, so that needs to be clarified. So, there's some, there's some large issues in terms of the need for, for some variances that, that we believe can be accommodated by pushing the building closer to the street, and there's some minor housekeeping details that, that can be quickly enough solved. So, again, based on what was provided, there's no requirement to take action this evening, and it's going to be up to the petitioner really to determine which direction to go with this. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions for the planning director? Mr. Sanzicca?
I was just curious, those are pretty basic requirements, that you would think that the applicants would come to you or someone on your staff to review before they put all this effort into the golfing site plan. Do they generally meet with you, the advocate?
Yes, yeah, this, this was actually our second, second round of reviews. We gave them a more informal one earlier on, and they, some of the issues are consistent from the first one to the second one, to be fair to the planning department.
Any other questions? Mr. Gottlieb.
Will you mention the driveway? I thought I saw something here about a curb cut. Also, not being correct. Is there a curb cut issue? I didn't hear you mention it. You just said driveway. Is that, was that the curb cut?
That was a curb cut issue, yes. Yeah, it was consolidating if possible.
Brent, I've got a question. What, what width does that driveway have to be? This is 23.6 and a half or something.
The, the drive-by needs to be 24 feet in width.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I thought, and you have the five-foot sidewalk along there too, and something, there might, maybe some protection for the pedestrians if they're walking on it. I mean, I don't know. Because that's the only way in and out, is that one, that one driveway. So, you're going to, it's not like it's just, you know, one-way traffic, so that, that seems very tight.
And what else? Mr. Hudson?
Just a comment. I've been concerned over the last two or three years that when the applicant will come in with a project, it looks like they're cramming every available foot legally possible, and maybe even squeezing a little more out. And I'm concerned that, you know, if we've got four tenant spots in this, this looks like it's really crowded in this space. If it meets the requirements, you know, I'd better improve it, but I'm just thinking, I'd much rather see one tenant in there instead of four separate ones.
And what else? If that is the applicant here?
Yes.
Please sign in. Can we sign where, to go to the microphone, please?
Good evening. Ed Elsari, A&amp;M Consultants.
Can you just speak up a little bit? That's just for the tape.
Is it working better?
It only goes to the recording.
Oh, okay.
No application is room for that.
That's why we're sure we can hear you.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, Ed Elsari, A&amp;M Consultants.
13746 Michigan Avenue, DuPont, Michigan.
I, I, I got this review letter just today, so, the, when we submitted...
It was my fault, was not his.
Yeah, well, I got it today, anyways. Well, when we submitted two times, the, we weren't aware of the 75-foot side, setback in the back, so, so that's why it's, it's not, I think that's the main issue, basically, and the, and the 10-foot...
Greenbelt.
The greenbelt in the back. All the other issues seem, you know, easy to, to be addressed. Yeah, it's addressed. So, I'll talk to my client, and we'll discuss how we're going to go about either moving in the front or, you know, whatever it is.
Just in, in terms of which approach, just, just, not, not to advise the applicant, but I guess I am, when, if it does go before, if you do make a determination that it's, you've got challenges moving the building forward for whatever reason, you're going to have to go before the zoning board of appeal, appeals and demonstrate practical difficulty, and that's going to be a challenge. So, just keep that in mind, that the zoning board of appeals of, city of Troy's will apply standards, they're very sophisticated as a body, and it is going to be a challenge to, to demonstrate practical difficulty. We have a ZBA member here who also serves on the planning commission. So, I would encourage you to, when you go back to your client, to suggest that you, the best approach is probably move the building forward versus go, versus seek ZBA action.
Okay.
That's, that's a significant variance, what you're, what you would be asking for.
Yeah. Okay, how about the, the 10-foot?
That's significant, too.
That's significant, too.
Well, that's, that's, that thing was...
Well, one more significant.
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak, I can't speak for any zoning board of appeals members. I just, I'll leave that comment as is, and...
Yeah.
Leave that up to you.
Yeah, well, the, the client has his own, you know, economical, you know, issues, or, you know, he wants to market the place, so, so he has his own dynamics, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to let the applicant know, economic issues are never entered in as a reason to allow variance, just let you...
Understood. Understood. But he, he's, you know...
He's putting the money.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
I hate to take over this conversation. As always, Mr. Chairman, we, if we get revised plans that, that address the provisions of the ordinance, we could turn a report around and get it in front of the planning commission quite quickly. So, you know, we, we don't want to be the speed bump and unnecessarily slow things down, so we will work with the petitioner to move this forward.
Mr. Stratt?
Are you the designer and the...
Yes.
And the architect?
Yeah.
Are you an architect?
Yeah.
Are you registered?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. You don't have a seal on this drawing, right?
We have a seal. When submitted, there was a seal.
As part of your site plan, Google process, it's a requirement.
Yeah, we see.
It is under.
It's on the hard copy.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Tagle?
Maybe you'd want to have a talk with Mr. Savidat about positioning the building closer to the front, because what you're going to have is a similar situation to what we have along Big Beaver Road in a lot of instances, where you really have to have two front doors. It's, because I noticed in your building, your back elevation is basically a block elevation with service doors on the back, whereas if you put your parking in the back, you want to make that an attractive elevation for customers. But you also want to have that visual attraction in the front of the, front of the building to on the Rochester roadside. So, you might want to talk to Mr. Savin about what some of the requirements are that we use along the Big Beaver corridor that has a, will have a similar situation as to what you're, you're going to have here.
Okay. Anyone else? Yeah, I have, just from my perspective, I thought this was going to be an uphill battle if you go to ZBA, because those are significant changes. And not only that, since you back up to residential property, you're going to have a lot of residents complaining about, you know, how close you are, and the fact that you're not putting screening or a greenbelt along the back is, can also be a problem. So, I think you could do yourself a big favor by rearranging the plan and moving, this building is really no larger than the existing building, correct? I thought it was five...
It's larger.
It is larger, a lot?
No, not, not by a lot.
I thought it was like five, 51, 62 or something. Okay, that, that's my two cents. Anyone else?
I think I might have one more comment. Let me just look at something here. Actually, if you move, if you move your building forward, it's going to give your customers a much better view angle of your building, because you'll be in front of your neighbor's building, because they're back further. So, that'll be able, you know, there'll be a better presence on the street for you. So, keep that, you know, certainly could support the move.
Thank you. Okay, that's it? We don't need a resolution?
No, we don't, and I'll, and I'll await, I'll await contact from the petition to discuss this, move this forward.
Okay. Okay, there's a little on to item eight, planning commission training.
Thank you.
Yeah, you can, do you need any help? So, Laurie was kind enough to give Alan the night off tonight.
Yeah.
And pitch it for him.
When he does.
Give us kind of a primer or reminder session on a few things at the request of the chairman, which I thought was a great idea.
Right. Well, I, I could just say that, you know, from past experience, even seasoned planning members always learn something new about this. I also want to thank Ms. Cruz for having her clients canceled, so she could be here with us today.
Sorry. All right. Let's see. Let's see the slideshow.
I think you want to view?
Okay, great, thanks. All right.
And then...
Which one, reading view?
Uh, that works.
That'll work, okay. Okay, all right. Well, thank you for letting me come tonight. I do appreciate being here. Actually, I did make handouts for you, too, so you can take these back. So, if you could pass these down, that would be great. Sometimes, sometimes it's easier just to take notes on them, so...
I want to pass that, Laurie, make sure it works.
Okay.
I think you want to do the slideshow, you want to...
You want to do the slideshow? We've got game.
I don't get one.
I don't know. Who are the experts?
I can, actually, I can speak from here, that, if that will work. That's okay, that's fine. That's, that's not a problem. It's good for me to stand, so, so, again, thank you for letting me be here. A lot of this is a refresher for, for all of you, but I'm actually trying to accomplish, kill two birds with one stone. What we realized is that there is probably a lack of just basic knowledge. So, when you have a new planning commissioner, for example, you know, you're, you've got lots of material, but it'd be really nice just to have a small, concise, you know, little primer, I guess. Also, I think it would be helpful to give council the same information, because some of the council members were not planning commissioners before they became council members, and so, a lot of what you do, you know, not everybody is, is familiar with it. Brent has not seen this yet, so he may not want to put it on the, on the planning website, but, but eventually, we'd like to maybe do it, to do it on there. I always think it's a good idea just to go through the, the very basics, and please, stop me at any point in time if you have suggestions about how we can improve this again, knowing that this, you guys are the experts, you guys have been doing this for a long time, some of you longer than others. I think Tom, I think you've been on it the whole time that I've been with the city, which has been almost 20 years. So, and I know that there are others that have served very similar lengths of time as well. So, but, yeah, so let's, so let's go back to the basics now, I think that's the first thing, and always I want to show that there is enabling, the enabling laws. So, state statute, city charter, and city ordinance authorizes a planning commission. And the purpose of the zoning regulations are to meet the community's need for food, fiber, natural resources, residences, recreation, industry, trade, and services. Also, ensure that the land is situated in appropriate locations and relationships, limit inappropriate overcrowding of land and congestion, and promote, this is the big one, the big one. I always want this to be foremost in my mind, promote the public health, safety, and welfare. If you can tie your decision to promoting the public health, safety... So again, that's the, that's the most important component, is the public health, safety, and welfare. You, you know that you have to be uniform with your ordinances and regulations, so you can't discriminate against one particular type of establishment. You have to, you know, you also can't discriminate based on who it is that's applying, so you need to make sure that everybody is being treated equally. And our zoning ordinance does a good job of that. You guys have, again, had a large part in that, but we do a good job of making sure that the light buildings are lumped together and they're all treated the same. Special uses are required of buildings that, you know, that justify, and they're, they're similar in nature. So, you know, again, we're treating everyone equally. Zoning ordinances shall be based on a plan designed, again, to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare, and also with reasonable consideration of the character of each district, the particular suitability for particular uses, and the conservation of property values and natural resources. Now, conservation of property values is kind of one of those double-edged swords, because you have a lot of citizens that come in and are opposed to a particular development, and they are demanding that you preserve their property values. You know, we call them NIMBYs. You guys have heard the term NIMBY. All of you have heard the term NIMBY, not in my backyard. And, and there is something to that, and there is, I mean, it is important that the residents are able to, you know, to come to the planning commission to express their, you know, their objections, because a lot of times that dialogue is going to lead to a better result, a better plan. But your job is to rise above it. Your job is to sometimes say, I'm sorry, but this is in the best interest of the city. This is preserving the, the character of the city. This is consistent with our master plan, and so therefore, we're going to, to move forward with this, and we're going to approve it. Or if it's a rezoning, we're going to recommend approval. And a lot of these, again, are basic, and I'm not going to go through each of them and read them again. If you have any suggestions, any questions, please feel free to stop me. I think it's important sometimes to go through, and not everybody knows the notice that has to be given in a public hearing. You need at least 15 days of public notice to all the property owners within 300 feet, and publication in a newspaper. So that, you have to do that, and if you don't, then your, your actions could be void if it's a public hearing. You must allow for commentary, and then you must report to council, and you're supposed to create a summary of the public commentary. I know Kathy is diligently taking minutes, and, you know, and I've read a lot of the planning commission minutes, and you do a good job of highlighting.
On, on, Lori, something you may remember for, for the Amber rezoning, we had, we had published a public hearing, we sent mailings, but there was an error in our GIS program, and we didn't send to all property owners within 300 feet. It was like 240 feet. So we had to cancel and reschedule the public hearing so that we didn't violate this act.
Does the, do the laws or the zoning enabling act, does it define publication in a newspaper? Is that like any newspaper, or is it specifically like the legal news?
We have, actually, we do not use the legal news. All of our official publications are through the Somerset Gazette. If we need a quicker publication, we will sometimes go to the open press, because Somerset Gazette, you need to get it in, because it's only a weekly paper. It's a lot cheaper for us to go to the Somerset Gazette. There are movements afoot to try and get electronic notification and to move away from the newspapers, because as you all know, newspapers are sort of becoming a thing of the past. And so there is some movement afoot, but unless and until they change the, the planning laws, we, we are compliant, we do comply, and as Brent has pointed out, we find out about something, and again, it was a GIS error, it wasn't anything that was intentional at all, but rather than move forward and risk invalidating any decisions that were made, we just pulled it off and, and, you know, communicated that ahead of time. And, and that was exactly the right way to do things, because again, it'd be much worse if you go through all of it, you get all of the public comments, you've got the citizens that are all, you know, up in arms, and they want to know what's going on. They're going to be frustrated if they have to come to four different meetings as opposed to two different meetings. So, so it is important, and Brent and Kathy and Ben, of course, are all working on all of that. They take care of all of that for you, but I just thought it was important that you knew that it does go out, and that it is 300 feet, and that it is published in every newspaper, and it's from the whole site. So it's all, it's whatever the site is, it's 300 feet around the circumference of it.
Make sure you don't give me credit for that. That's Kathy.
Okay, well, then Kathy is doing a fabulous job of that.
Is 300 feet the minimum?
That is the requirement, yes. So if it's, if it's even a little piece of, of property that's within that 300-foot, you know, circumference, then it's, they're going to get notification.
There are some communities that have 1,000 feet.
That, and...
I was just wondering if that's a lot of those 300, Ben?
This is, this is the minimum standard, obviously. You have to comply with this. You can obviously do more. One of the things that we do, which I think is particularly effective, is you put out the, the sandwich boards. The sandwich boards are great, and in fact, we went up to Rochester Hills, and they were lauding, you know, their, how great they were, because they do the sandwich boards to communicate, but it works. It really does work, and people know, people inquire, and then I'm sure that you guys get a lot of inquiries.
Yeah, we actually exceed the requirements in three areas that I can think of. One is the sandwich boards, this is good. One, we have a portal, so we have an online information portal where people can check on it. And the third is for rezonings and other, similar rezonings, BUDs, we have a city council public hearing. For rezonings, it's not required by law that city council have a public hearing for rezoning, but we have one. So we exceed it in three areas.
Yep. And, and again, we're always going to err on the side of being open and transparent. We think that that's the best way of doing government, so...
Is the 300 feet from any boundary of the site itself?
It is.
Okay.
Yes, so any portion of the site, even if it's a little piece of it, if it's within that 300 foot, then we're going to, we're going to provide notification. And again, we do that through the GIS. They just do a circumference, and they just, they plot the property, all of the boundaries of the property, and then they do a circumference with GIS, 300 feet. And again, we're going to err on the side of, you know, notifying. If it's close, we'd rather notify than go through the whole process again, because, you know, by publishing in a newspaper and sending out all of the mailings, it can get expensive, so we want to do that once if we can, can do that. Okay, and then Brent already referred to, we, that city council holds a public hearing, absolutely not required, but we do that because we, we really want to get the input of the residents. And then also, courts are, you know, rezoning, that's a legislative function, and text amendments, those are legislative functions. So the courts are supposed to defer to the judgment of the persons who are getting all of the information. So they're going to defer to you and also to council. If it's a rezoning or text amendment, obviously council has the final decision-making power on that. But as long as there is documentation and justification, and that's what's really important, is to make sure that you have documentation and justification of all of your decisions. You know, for example, the, the case that was just before you, you know, the 50, obviously it didn't comply with our zoning ordinance for the site plan, you know, so certainly that's a great basis for, you know, for not approving it, but you detail all those things. You detail the fact that, you know, the 10-foot green belt didn't satisfy that, you know, the parking didn't satisfy the 75-foot. You detail everything like that. Now, you do have a great benefit, because you do have a report. Your agenda packets are, are great, and if we had a case that challenged one of the zoning decisions, we would really rely on the background that is provided in your agenda pack, as well as the minutes, and as well as the discussion. All of these are being televised, so the, the meetings are always going to be available. So we're going to take all of that discussion and transcribe it, and everything that is said in the meeting can be used, you know, to, to support the decision. Certainly, it's even better if it's written and spoken. We really like to have written documentation in the form of minutes and the, and the agenda pack. And you know this, but it bears repeating, you have to, any rezoning has to be consistent with the master land use plan, and it, that has to be one of the, the things that, that you're always focused on, is the master land use plan. Now, it was interesting, because as you know, those of you who've been around for a little bit, we had our old master land use plan was done in 65, and I think there were, what, 20-some amendments to it. It really needed to be done again in 2008. A lot of you took part in that, and, you know, it's, it's great now, but I know that you're undergoing another evaluation of the master plan. Just make sure that your master plan is looking out to the future, and, and you have to be consistent with that. So it is really critical that you focus on that master plan, because all of your zoning decisions and your zonings are going to need to be consistent with it. So it's, it's critical, and thank you for, for taking on that responsibility and for, you know, for, for taking it so seriously, and for getting all of the, the public input in doing that. Arbitrary or capricious? I wish I knew exactly what that was. I don't think that there's really any definition. It's kind of one of those, you know it when you see it, but, but again, just justify your basis for whatever it is. It can't be arbitrary or capricious. Arbitrary or capricious would be if it were discriminatory. Arbitrary or capricious would be if you didn't like, let's say it's a TJ Maxx that's going in there, and you just don't like big department stores. You can't base your decision only on that. You need to have legitimate planning, you know, rationale. So again, you're going back to the land use and the neighborhood and the compatibility. You're going back to all of those things which are, again, in your mandate, what you're supposed to be looking out for. The, the other thing, too, is that you cannot completely exclude uses from, from the city. Adult use is, is one of those things that, you know, we, we don't have any adult uses, but we do not exclude them, because if we were to exclude them, then they could, could, you know, come in anywhere in, in the city. So they could challenge us, and they may win if they, if they were to challenge us. So knocking on wood right now, because we, we don't have any yet, but...
So for takeaways tonight, you know, if you're looking at like eight or nine things to take away that are really, really important, the first and the third bullets are, are two of the really critical things to take away.
Right.
Rezoning must be based on a master plan, and then the exclusion, not to be exclusionary in terms of zoning. Really important.
Yeah. And, you know, the exclusionary zoning, there is an exception in the state statute, says that there's no appropriate location, or the use is unlawful. Well, again, if it's unlawful, you don't have to allow it in there. You know, I don't know how you'd ever have that. You, you don't have to have it if it's unlawful. Obviously, that, that's kind of sense, but no appropriate location, that's, that's a harder one. I, I don't know exactly what that means. I will just tell you that being as conservative as possible, that you probably won't be faced with a situation where there's no appropriate location. So no exclusionary zoning, absolutely, that's, that's something to, to keep in mind. And these, I threw this in here just because there are, of course, preemption, there is some preemption possibilities. So, for example, if, you know, they want to put electric transmission wires, which we've actually had some of those cases where they sought approval, that's governed by state statute, so we don't, you don't get a setback and that kind of thing. Mining and extraction laws, thanks to a recent case and some recent legislation that followed that case, you, that the state law is going to be preempting any local regulation. Wireless facilities, again, you know that there are regulations, what you can and cannot approve with wireless facilities. You know, you can't base it on harmful effects and radiation and things like that. That's going to be state law.
Yeah, I wonder if you had addressed the issue as it relates to your personal opinion on aesthetic value. I don't like the design. I don't like the elevation. What's the danger in expressing your own personal opinion and voting against it?
Based on, based on aesthetics only?
Yeah.
Based on, now, again, you, you, I guess it depends. If aesthetics is something that is explicitly allowed as a special use condition, for example, then, then it may be appropriate. I would really, again, I'm, I'm going to be conservative. I'm the one who gets to defend the lawsuits if, if we get them. I'm, I'm going to say that I would like to see something other than aesthetics as the, as the basis.
I know that it has come up. I'm talking about rezoning where I don't like the elevations, or I don't like this. I, I think that's very dangerous, because we're rezoning the property, we're not rezoning the project.
Absolutely. Yeah, and, and that's, that's something, too, that not everybody understands, and that's something that's a little bit difficult when you, when you first start doing this, is that you don't realize that when you're rezoning, you cannot consider the, the site plan. They may want to show it to you, but you cannot consider the site plan that they're going to show, because they're going to show you what, you know, is going to be very attractive, and it's going to look great, but you can't consider that. And what you need to do is you need to assume that it's going to be the worst-case scenario. It is going to be as big as it can possibly be under the, under the zoning ordinance provisions. That's what you need to assume, because that's what could be allowed. You can't, I mean, if it's rezoned, they get to do anything that is authorized under that, that new rezoning category. So assume that it's the worst-case scenario. And then I think, Mr. Shuck, you're right?
It says on, in the last one there about mining laws. Does that mean drilling or fracking or anything like that? Can we pass something that would prohibit that kind of unlimited? Because you're in a limited area, where you're going to have carryover, maybe smell, maybe contamination of other resources.
Right.
Is that impossible for the planning commission to look at?
It's not impossible. It is impossible if you're a township or a county, but we're cities, and so we have greater abilities than they do as townships and counties. So I know that Brent and I and Alan and Ben have met on some fracking. We're doing some research, we're getting some information. We think that there are some things that you can do with regards to minimize the detrimental impacts of fracking. So we're working on that, and, and that, I think, will be coming to you at a future time. But we, you know, yeah, good, good point. Again, you guys are, are proactive and seeing what's out there, and you're reading, you're getting educated, and so we're dealing with, with things much more progressively than many other communities. And I think, Ms. Cruz first, if I may, and then...
I just wanted to confirm that the conditional site plan zoning means that they can only put on that site what they've shown you?
We're going to get to that in a, in a couple, we're going to talk specifically about conditional zoning. But yes, you are, if the site plan is one of the conditions, that it'll be developed only in accordance with that site plan, then that is correct. Generally, generally, if it's just the straight rezoning for rezonings, then just assume it's going to be the worst development that possibly could happen.
Yeah. The only thing I was wondering, one of the things that was discussed when we first brought this fracking up at our planning commission meeting, was the option of a six-month moratorium, and how, if that makes sense, because I noticed a lot of neighboring cities are actually doing that. And I was just wondering, is that being considered for Troy?
It, it is, but I, I don't recommend that. And the reason that I don't recommend that is even to go through the moratorium process, you have to go through the same process that you go through for the rezoning, to do a moratorium. So you're announcing to the world that we're going to be enacting this law, we're studying it, and also you go to, to the planning commission, you go to city council as well. So, so I think, again, you can do that, that is an option, that probably will be one of the options that you could consider to, to recommend, but again, by the time, you know, by the time you get through all of that process, you might have somebody who's on high alert and decides that they want to come in and get under the wire. So, yeah, so... it, and also you go to, to the planning commission, you go to city council as well. So, so I think, again, you, you can do that, that is an option, that probably will be one of the options that you could consider to, to recommend, but again, by the time, you know, by the time you get through all of that process, you might have somebody who's on high alert and decides that they want to come in and get under the wire. So, yeah, so you write that there are communities that are doing moratoriums. Actually, I'm not aware of any that have actually affected. Utica was considering it, I think, or Shelby.
Rochester.
Okay, yeah, so, so, but that's something, again, we're working on, we'll get it to you as, as quickly as we can about the fracking because it, obviously it is of some concern. I think also with fracking, there is a lot of information out there, but a lot of it is based on what's happening in states like Pennsylvania where they have different conditions than what we have here in, in Michigan. So we have to really kind of work through all of that and we have to make sure that we're dealing with information that is, is appropriate for the soil that we have and the impact that it's going to have in, in the state of Michigan. Protest petitions, I know we've had at least one, it failed protest petition, but we've had at least one protest petition in the last year, I think the last few months. And I just want you to be aware of this because it requires a super majority if we do get it. And we have had protest petitions in the past during, you know, my time in the city. I know that we've had at least one or maybe two. I don't know whether we were involved in those or not, but.
Yes.
I think, yes. So, so we have had, we have had some. And basically, a protest petition would be, you need to have the signatures of at least twenty percent of the adjacent property owners and that's within a hundred feet of the proposed site. And again, we do that circumference, again, a hundred feet all around the entire parcel. And as long as it's filed with the city clerk before the city council takes action, then there's a two-thirds majority for city council. I think the last one was presented just before the council, it might have been like noon or something, on the Monday before the council meeting when they were going to be taking action. So just be aware of this. The planning department, kudos to Brent and I should have remembered this, that you were involved in this because you've got that on your website. So as far as a protest petition, state law doesn't really have any format. It just says, oh, you can file a petition and a protest petition will meet these requirements. The, the planning department, actually you guys have got a form on there, you make it easy, you set forth the requirements for protest petitions. So, so again, I think that's a, you know, something, but not everybody knows about protest petitions, so it's good to know.
Still very misunderstood from the public. There's a, there's a perception that if you get some signatures on the petition that you download from our website and you get it in before noon that day, you stop everything. And that's not the case.
Right.
It triggers a two-thirds voter majority if it's a valid protest petition.
Exactly. And we do check, you know, and make sure, you know, that it does have to meet the requirement that it's twenty percent of the adjacent property owners. So, so that is verified, you know, in a very timely fashion with GIS capabilities, we're able to do all of that quickly.
Is the one hundred feet the city requirement or is that a state requirement?
No, that's actually out of the state statute.
Okay.
That's out of the state statute and the other thing too, I didn't mention this, it's not in here, but it excludes any public property. So if it's public easement or, you know, you don't, you don't include that part of it, but it's, it's twenty percent within.
So if it's, if it's a hundred and fifty foot right of way.
Right.
It doesn't even go across, across, all the way across the street because it's only a hundred feet.
Right.
So it's got some nuances to it.
Referendum. I'm not aware of any referendums that have been filed on zoning petitions. Obviously, we've dealt with initiatives and referendums in other contexts, but, but this is actually governed by our city charter, chapter five of the city charter, and this referendum can be done for a zoning. And to do that, you need again, another petition. Two thousand signatures are required by our charter. You have to get those signatures within ninety days of turning them in and they date back to the registered voters as of the last election. So if you were a registered voter at the last election, then you can sign a petition. There are other requirements such as you have to, you know, sign, it has to be signed in your presence and all of that, but, but yeah, it's two, two thousand signatures is under our charter. That is an amendment, I think that was amended in probably two thousand and five, two thousand and six. It used to be a percentage, which is more common in, in any of the other communities. It's, it's, I don't know, we have this to start with here. And then, okay, so if, if they do meet the requirement for two thousand signatures within ninety days, then city council gets to look at it. Now, I'm guessing that city council, if it's a zoning issue, they're going to refer it to you and ask your advice on the, on the referendum, but basically what they're trying to do with a referendum is overturn a decision that has been made. So, so city council has thirty days to review and then they can decide that they're going to repeal the zoning ordinance. If they said, oh, you know what, we really made a mistake here, we're, you know, we've got two thousand people that, you know, don't want to see us do this, they can rescind it and move, that's a rezoning action that they can take. They can also schedule it for the next regularly scheduled election. So it's an election, if it's a county, you know, if it's a state election, whatever it is, the next election. If it's a city election, it's just one of the regular election dates. We have four of them every year and if there's something else that's scheduled, then it would, then it would be on that ballot. If you want to suspend it immediately, zoning, zoning ordinance, you can get twenty-five percent or more registered voters to sign a petition within sixty days. And if that happens, then it's immediately suspended. And so, you know, you can't, nobody could bring any new proposals based on the zoning ordinance. And then this is just, you know, once, once the electric has voted, then it's effective for six months. You can't touch it for six months, basically. So that's just an interesting provision that, that may come into play. We hope not because all of your decisions are again, based on all of the education and all of the public input that you get. Okay, conditional zoning, and Ms. Cruz, you've already asked a question about this already. So this is, this is kind of, this is one of those things that I will tell you, this is probably my least favorite way of proceeding with zoning. I like to have it by the book. I do not like conditional zoning because inevitably, I, I'm concerned that a developer could say that we strong-earned them into granting certain conditions. It's important that you know with conditional rezoning or conditional zoning, it has to be their proposal, it has to be the developer's proposal and it has to be in writing. And again, this is something that is, you know, it's a rezoning, but it allows for a condition. If it's a, you know, if they know that they're not going to get a rezoning, a straight rezoning, then they can say, well, okay, if you'll give us a rezoning, we'll limit it to the site plan, for example, that's, that's one example. Or if you give us this rezoning, we won't put, you know, our, the height of our structures will be limited, or we're going to have additional green space, any of those things. I mean, those are all appropriate things. Yes, Ms. Schuckler?
In writing, what if it's graphically presented, like a site plan or a drawing? Is that?
That would qualify.
A booklet?
Yeah, that, that would qualify. Just, I would say that it would qualify just because writing is defined in several other state statutes, it's been very, very broad, in fact, we're going to get to FOIA law and it's, you know, writing basically is anything, as long as you can reproduce it and you can rely on it, you know, and, and, and there's something to indicate that this is what they're going to do. I mean, they can write on it, you know, this is, you know, this is our site plan. As long as you can tie it and you know that that's a condition that they are voluntarily offering, then, then that would be appropriate, that would meet that, that requirement. The city can say, okay, you said you're going to take this action. In order to get this rezoning, you're going to, you know, demolish, let's say it's a blighted area. In order to get this, this conditional rezoning, you have to demolish all these structures within a year or ninety days. You know, you can, you can't impose additional conditions during that time period, but you can give them some time to complete whatever it is that you, that, that they want to complete in order to get the consideration of rezoning. The city shall not, and this is, this is again, another takeaway, we cannot require them to offer conditions as a requirement for the rezoning and we can't add to or alter the conditions. And again, I think one of the things that I'm nervous about is I know that Brent and Ben meet with a lot of developers and I'm worried that they're going to say, or, you know, in the planning commission, that come to the planning commission and suggestions are made. I'm worried that they're going to think that those suggestions are mandates. And so that's why I don't like conditional rezonings. I would tell you that fortunately, we have never been sued on one of them because generally things work out. I mean, you know, we're, they're getting the rezoning that they wanted and in exchange, we're getting a condition or a limitation on it. And so because it is a compromise, we, we don't generally see a lot of lawsuits out of us.
But Lori, I think there are, if a conditional rezoning can have advantages over what straight rezoning could be. Because straight rezoning would allow them to, you know, to have different setbacks and things like that. If we're, they're limiting them with a, with the offer of volunteering a conditional zoning that has a site plan, then that could, that could be an advantage for the city as a whole.
It is a tool in the toolbox. However, if your master plan is updated to provide for development as you see it, then you need to be consistent with that master plan, then the zoning should be appropriate and should be compatible and, you know, so, so again, it is a tool. I'm not saying that, that there's never a situation for it and again, I've never had a case where, you know, there was a, a conditional zoning challenge, but it's the, it's the zoning that is not implemented and it's the zoning that won't actually be achieved that's going to give us the, the hard time and that's what's probably likely to result in, in a lawsuit. But again, if, if, I understand that, that some members like it, I, I know that some council members like conditional zonings as well. And, you know, again, if, if we're going to do it, if you're going to do it, we certainly want to have a written agreement, we certainly want to have it run with the land and we want to have it as tight as we possibly can. We've always, you know, almost always require the site plan to be a part of it or, you know, if it's like a height limitation, we're going to record that, we're going to, you know, we're going to make sure that there's adequate protection so that we can hold them to whatever it is that they have agreed to. Planned unit developments, you guys have done a lot of these, so I'm not going to do a whole lot of, of this, but basically they allow for the mixed use development. You're talking about the live work units, that would be allowed with a mixed use development. You know, basically it's, it's allowing for just a different, it's, it's another tool in, in the toolbox. You know, under Troy's zoning ordinance, city council has final authority and you know that, but sometimes I think it's just good to kind of, you know, who, who approves these, these documents? Sometimes it's just good to know that. And you do make recommendations, actually you do a lot of work on PUDs in the past. I've seen a lot of, of work that, that you have done. And again, those are, we have agreements on all of those planned unit developments as well. Any questions on PUDs? And when was the last PUD that was done?
The last PUD that was probed and not simply revised was five years ago.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I haven't seen that come up a whole lot.
Yeah, Arkans, Arkans Jones was a revision as well. So yeah, five, five or six years.
Wasn't there one that was just revised?
Yeah, there's been a couple revised in the last two years.
Less than a year.
Yeah, Kilmer, Kilmer, they added some residential units and Arkans Jones. I'm buying them for.
Revised meaning that they had changed the aesthetics or the, the number of residential?
Um, or they, they changed the overall design of the overall approved PUD.
Right. And that's what bothers me because when I interpretation, I understand that the PUD was that. It's a mixed use development, meaning that it's mixed use in terms of the building itself that contains the mixed use, not that it's a divided property of mixed use because that could be rezoned. And I, I understood it to be that when it first, when it first came to fruition. Now it's being really utilized as separate parcels being considered as PUD.
I, I think, Mr. Schuckler, that, Mr. Strad, I think that that's one of the reasons why we have not pursued that. I agree with you, I think that was the whole thing, to have a coordinated development. For example, John R. Big Beaver PUD was supposed to all be done at the same time. And again, you know, you don't do your commercial first, you do all of the development, you get all of the infrastructure and you do coordinated pathways and benches and all of that. And that's really what, what we've tried to accomplish, but again, it's a, it's a legislative process and so they're not, so, so what I would love to see in a PUD agreement doesn't always get put into the, to the PUDs.
The, the challenge that we have, and, and I, I hear what you're saying, the challenge we have is that we have, the retail people say, I'm a retail guy, a retail woman, and the, and the residential person says, I'm a residential person. And, and they're not, you know, there's, there's that dividing line and we don't have that.
Right.
I agree with you, it's a pain from where our, from where Lori is and where I am, it's a pain because now you're, you deal with two or three different applicants. It's one applicant, but it's more than that.
Well, I, I see it as one applicant coming in that wants to develop it and develops the retail center and then he sells off the back portion to somebody in labor who wants to do it. And then we modify that and say, okay. I don't, I don't think that was really the intent of the PUD.
It wasn't.
And, and that, that's what bothers me when I see that happen. I like Brent's, you know, the, what was the project that was right down, right down the street from him, that, that high rise? That was a PUD, now that was a real PUD to me. Because that was a mixed use and it really was, you know, parking structures and everything else was incorporated, he couldn't subdivide that off into different parcels.
Right, yeah.
You know, that was the intent, as I understood, when it came to flourishing, PUD, but China was there in what, ten years or so?
The, the Monarch, correct?
The Monarch, yeah.
Even that one was going to be subdivided because there was townhomes to the north that were going to be done by someone different.
But.
You're right.
But, but what we were trying to do is to have one project manager, if you will.
Yes, yes.
And then they would be the, you know, that would be our go-to person with the PUD and then the project manager would deal with the residential and the commercial. Unfortunately, that's just one of those things that, you know, again, is not really, it's not, it's, it's, the development community has not embraced that approach and, and there are some complications.
You're right, because what happens is each has their own civil engineer, their own architect and their, their own realty, so it becomes all these different teams and it's, you're right, I agree with you. It's, it's become more than what was intended, for sure, you know.
But, but this is an opportunity, if you do get PUDs, we would love to see you be very firm on making sure that there is like one project manager and that is a coordinated development and that the infrastructure is all put together. And the other thing too, is that there's something cohesive to the, to the PUD.
Right.
You know, you want benches or walkways or something that ties it all together. And so that's something, again, just to keep in mind when you're doing any future PUDs, you know, try and, and do that if you can.
What we want, but we have, and not allowing to sell it or to modify.
Again, it's all with the contract, it's all with the PUD contract and the way that the ordinance is written, it, it allows for us to do agreements like that, but again, it's a legislative process and, and so it doesn't always work the way we want it to. But if there are recommendations and again, I think that's something if you strongly, I feel very strongly about that, make those recommendations to, to city council and again, to have them documented. You know, sometimes it's just a lack of information or a lack of history. I mean, you, you've been through it, you've seen what has happened and so sometimes it's just communicating that history that, that you all have, others may not have it, is beneficial. Consent judgments, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this, but we do have some consent judgment agreements, which is actually another type of rezoning. We, Brent has, has, I know he, he does not like them, but unfortunately, it is a reality. A lot of them were done before I, I came to the city. We have done amendments and you have been involved in amendments to consent judgments, but we have not had a whole lot of consent judgments while I've been here with the, with the city, other than the transit sector, Grand Sacra consent judgment, which is, I'll therefore, I think that's probably one of the best ones that.
We've inherited thirty some of these and the problem is, we've got, obviously new zoning ordinance in two thousand and eleven and all these refer to, you know, shall be consistent with, and it refers to old zoning districts that are no longer valid, but we, so I still have to keep a copy of the ordinance, the old one that's been repealed, because the consent judgments refer to the provisions of that ordinance. It's messy.
And, and thankfully Brent and Kathy have worked on this and I think we've got Terry involved in it as well, you know, people would come to. You know, people would come to Brent's counter and say, "I want to amend this consent judgment." And they would have the name of the developer, maybe, or they would have the name of the current owner. But we were recording them based on the previous owner, the previous developer. And so you really had to figure out, you had to have a great memory as to which development this was, and which consent judgment, and which lawsuit this was, because there was really nothing to tie it together. Now, at least, we have them all on the map, and when you call up the zoning map, there are stars and asterisks, so you can access the consent judgment. So that's a huge kudos to the Planning Department for that. And consent judgments, if they do get amended, and we've had a few of them, we go through the rezoning process generally to do that. The only exception to that would be if it's really just a very minor modification. You know, they need two inches, for example. You know, maybe it's something that would have to be really, 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 you know.
We actually, we've done, I'll give kudos back to you. The city attorney and city attorney's office has worked with us. A lot of the older consent judgments that haven't been amended yet say, you know, if any change whatsoever is contemplated, it's got to go all the way back to the process. Well, now, we work with the city attorney to put in language that says, "If it's something that's insignificant," or, you know, "We don't have to go through the rezoning process. We can do it through either administratively or through the site plan review process." So it speeds things up, it just makes more sense.
Any questions? Okay, special land uses, and you guys deal with these a great deal. And so special land uses, I love special land uses, because you get to protect, you're putting in a lot of protections for the residents. You're putting in a lot of, you know, buffer zones, for example. Or, you know, these are unusual uses, but again, these are uses that are likely to generate some inconveniences to the neighbors. So you have special uses where you require them to meet certain conditions. For example, the daycare, you know, that's a special use, and you'd have like a certain amount of, you know, play area that you would need. Or, I mean, there are just tons of examples of special uses. And it's critical that they meet every one of those criteria. So you should be looking to the ordinance. I know you get the document. I know that you have the zoning ordinance provisions before you every time you look at a special use. But it's really important that you hold them to all of those particular criteria for the special uses. So that's, and you can impose additional conditions as well. If you don't think that there's adequate protection, if it's really unusual, you don't think that there are adequate protections, you can impose additional criteria only for the special uses, not for conditional zonings. But for special uses, there's a lot of latitude. And these are the uses that really are likely to generate, you know, inconveniences to the neighbors. Or they would be difficult to put in, for example, to a residential area. So you want to really protect everyone else. I don't have a whole lot. Twelve of twenty-eight? No. I'll move forward faster. Site plan approval, the takeaway on this one is that if it meets the zoning ordinance, you have to approve it. Okay? So if it meets everything, and, is the other caveat, is that if they have provided you with all of the information that is required, and it meets state, federal, and other city laws, then you have to approve it. So if you don't want to approve a particular site plan, then there better be some violation of state law, federal law, city ordinance, or they better not have provided all of the information to you. So site plans, you must approve if they provide you with the information, and it meets all of the zoning ordinance requirements. You don't have public hearings on site plans. You actually have a great practice of allowing public comment, and I would encourage that. I encourage you to continue to do that. You do that before the items. You don't have to allow it before each item, but it's great that you do, because then they're speaking only to that item. So you guys are doing a great job with that. Variances, you guys don't do variances, other than, I mean, obviously, the VZA does variances. But there are two types of variances, dimensional variances and use variances. Use variances, something that we have with the new zoning ordinance, and really should be very sparingly granted, only when there really is no other use of that property, in that it's economically just not feasible, but very sparingly for use variances. Dimensional variances really should be related to the land, and practical difficulty should be followed. Again, variances are permission to break the law. And so they should be very sparingly used. Conditions, you know, you need to make sure that you're clear if you're putting conditions on variances. Master plan amendments, you're going through all of this now. I don't need to go through all of this. You have it in the materials as well. But basically, you guys are doing it. You're required every five years to at least look at it. You decide whether or not you think the changes are necessary. You give that information to council, and then council decides whether or not they want to go through, and then there's public hearing process, and you have to give it to other jurisdictions and all of that. So I'm not going to go into all of that. Okay, moving on from the planning and the primer part of it. Conflicts of interest. Do not participate in any manner where there's conflict of interest. And I guess a rule of thumb is if you have a financial interest, that is going to be a conflict of interest. You know, financial interest, we also say if you have real property in close proximity, and your property value is likely to be impacted. Now, you guys have done a great job. You've been very conservative on this one. I would say it has to be in the immediate vicinity, not, you know, not a block over. But err on the side of caution, if you are not sure, then you can always disclose. I would encourage you to always, always disclose, and then let the Planning Commission decide. So then, again, that's added protection for you. You know, and again, you want to avoid any appearance of impropriety and err on the side of disclosure with potential conflicts. Even if you are in the neighborhood, you probably still may want, you know, you want to disclose it, probably. You never will go wrong if you disclose it, because again, it shows that we're transparent, and everybody knows where you're coming from. And, you know, again, you may be in that situation. If you have a conflict of interest, please leave the room when the matter is being discussed. Somebody will come and get you, whether it's in there or, you know, out here. But just please, just leave the room completely, because otherwise, you're going to be accused of influencing somehow. So if there's a conflict, you should not participate. Also, do not, you know, if it's your own property and you're seeking approval, have somebody else represent you. Do not appear in front of the Planning Commission in your own personal capacity. Always have somebody else representing you. Those are probably pretty straightforward, but sometimes they just need to be mentioned. Conflicts of interest, just that it comes from the Michigan Constitution. You can't have any conflicts of interest. Also, state law, MCL fifteen, point three point two. Incompatible offices, you can't hold incompatible offices. These are just some other things, too. I'm going to get into the City Council's, their ethics policy, because I think it's a great ethics policy that they go by. But individual planning commissioners, you should always state that the planning commission speaks through its resolutions only. And even if you're on a minority of the decision, you still have to support the decision, because that is the decision of the planning commission. So if you're asked a question, your response is, "The planning commission voted this way." You know, you don't say, "I disagree." It's in the minutes, so certainly, you know, your disagreement is going to be there. But you have to support the decision of the majority of the planning commission and what that is. So you don't speak through, as an individual, you speak as a planning commission member. Applicants, I know sometimes you do site visits. And I strongly encourage you to not have any dialogue with the applicants, because inevitably, what will happen is the, first of all, you want everybody to have the same information that you have. And so the best way of accomplishing that is to have them come in and give you all the same information, or to send it to you. You can send it by email, and you're all going to get the exact same information. What you don't want is, you know, having one person dialogue, and then they misunderstand it, and then they report back, or they, you know, it's just not on the same footing. So just, if you can, I strongly encourage you, do not talk with applicants when you're doing a site visit, or do not reach out to the applicants. Get your information from this table. This is where you should get all of your information, other than is to view the site. Absolutely, go view the site, but, you know, get your information from this table and from what is brought to you, because that is what is part of the public record. Whatever you see in your conversations with the applicant, they're not going to be part of the public record, and you can rely on that, so do it.
The application actually gives permission to the planning commission members or any official of the city to actually view their site.
Site visits are different, absolutely. And I encourage you to, I think you have to do that to really do a good job. You have to go out there, but just if they, you know, blame it all on me and just say, "I'm sorry, the attorney told me that I can't talk with you, but we're happy to have you communicate with Brent and get the information to all of the planning commission members." So yeah, so I'll be the heavy on that one, absolutely.
One quick question. Does that mean when they sign the application, that it gives us permission to go on their property?
That's on their application. I think that there's, we put that on there because you guys have asked us for that, because you were, you know, not sure that that was something that it did allow you to do. So that is now on the application, so that you do have. And they're going to want you to view their property. They want the rezoning, or they want the site plan approval. So they're going to give you permission, but we've just got the legal protection in having the application exactly to stay there.
I got kicked off with that.
Yeah?
Yeah, but I didn't have the badge at that time.
Oh, okay.
But now, I guess the new ones should have badges as well. I know I have a badge.
You're just gathering information and just doing a site visit anyways. You're not dialoguing. So they really shouldn't have any...
Well, they didn't know that I was on a planning commission.
Oh, okay.
What proof did you have?
Yes, yeah.
It's wise to just...
Always have your, yeah, you don't want to come at you with a gun, but... But Brent, you do tell them that that's like, I mean, when they come in and when they file an application, do you tell them that planning commissioners might be...
We try to. Let me forget on occasion. But that's, I mean, I think it's a good idea to, if you are on a site, and it's, you know, not all sites. Some sites are busy, you'll be noticed. Others are more kind of private nature. If there's a situation where you feel you're going to look like you're trespassing, or you're up to no good, it's probably a good idea to knock on the door and say, "I'm out here to dialogue. I'm introducing myself. I'm a planning commission member. Your item's on the agenda next week. I'm just looking around, and I'll be gone in ten minutes."
Right. That's perfect. That's a perfect script. The City of Troy City Council Code of Ethics, I love this, and it's two slides. You have it, and I just think that it kind of just reemphasizes everything that we want you to keep in mind, because you are a public official. So, you know, again, there's not many opportunities for you to get privileged information. We may occasionally send you a privileged and confidential memorandum. And just so that you know, we have a practice here in Troy. If you do get something that's privileged and confidential, you're going to get a hard copy of it. You're going to get lots of privileged and confidential. If it's a hard copy, we're going to put it on blue paper so that it's really clear that this is a privileged and confidential document. And we're probably going to ask for it back afterwards, too. Just, that's normally what we do. So again, it's very rare that we would do that. There are occasions when it is, you know, when we will send you a privileged and confidential memorandum, but believe me, we're going to make it very clear, and you will know absolutely that it's privileged and confidential. And again, we talked about this, that you don't speak as an individual. You speak on, you know, you can say, "The planning commission decision was this." Encourage free expression of opinion by all members. Render decisions based on your independent judgment. Make an effort to attend all of the meetings. Be informed, be knowledgeable, be educated. Avoid conflict appearance. Do not use a position for personal benefit or for the benefit of anyone else associated with you. And again, this is something that's, you know, because everything is electronic now, just be very cautious about what you're communicating electronically and avoid derogatory and denigrating language. You are the face of the City of Troy for many people. It's their only contact with the city. So be very respectful and courteous. Again, don't let them get out of line, but, you know, again, you are the face of the city, and I know that you all conduct yourself with appropriate decorum. So I don't have to dwell on that one. Sunshine laws, and I don't have a whole lot on here to really streamline this, but the Open Meetings Act and Freedom of Information Act are post Watergate. They call them sunshine laws. Bullock Kulki is another one as well, but it's 1977. We actually had versions of these, the Open Meetings Act and FOIA, before 1977, but after the federal law, we modified ours. And so they really have not been substantially changed since 1977. There have been tweaks here or there. Recently, we had a lot of proposed amendments to the Open Meetings Act and FOIA. None of them have really resulted in a substantial changes, but there is movement afoot, so just be aware of that. You are absolutely a public body. There's no question about that. And also, the Planning Enabling Act and the Zoning Enabling Act tell us that you have to comply with FOIA and the Open Meetings Act.
Are there situations where a city can refuse FOIA on public documents?
Depends on if there are applicable exceptions.
Too rough.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, well, I've got, the FOIA is my last slide, so I'll come back to that. If you don't address it, then ask me some questions about it. But I want you to be very clear about, you know, this is absolutely a meeting. You know, you all know that. It's disputable. But there could also be virtual meetings, which you may not be aware of. In a virtual meeting, my favorite is the email chain of discussion, when you use reply to all. Again, I told you before, those of you who have heard my spiel before, delete that key from your keyboard. Do not ever, ever, ever use it, even if it's just to say, "I won't be there today." You can communicate with Brent. You can communicate with Kathy. You can communicate with Alan or I, or anyone in our office. But do not use the reply to all button, even if it's just something, you know, again, that's not substantive, because people will presume the worst, and they will assume that you are violating the Open Meetings Act in communicating and getting into here. So do not use email, reply to all. You can use email, and again, you can go to Brent, and then Brent can disseminate to everyone, but just don't have a dialogue together. You can go to social gatherings or educational sessions, but don't have either forums, or don't deliberate or discuss. Okay? And just be aware that if there's a forum of you at a social event or at an educational session, people are going to say that you were talking about a planning commission item. Just, you know, just you have to be aware that that's going to be their initial impression. So just be very mindful of that. Try to avoid forums whenever you can. You know, again, site visits is another opportunity. If you get a bunch of you that are going to a site visit, again, try and avoid having a forum there if you can. Be also cautious of subcommittees. If you have subcommittee, that becomes the new public body. So if you have four of you that are serving on a subcommittee, your new forum is going to be a lot less than the forum of the whole body. So be careful about that, and be careful about subcommittees, because it can create another Open Meetings Act violation inadvertently. Not that you guys would ever do anything inappropriate, but the accusations will be made. The round robin telephonic or email discussion, this is something, too, that I want to talk about, because that is when, let's say that the chairperson calls Mr. Senzika, let's say, and he finds out how Mr. Senzika is going to be voting. And then he calls Mr. Shupkey, and he says, "Mr. Shupkey, I know that Mr. Senzika is going to vote this way, and I'd like you to vote, how are you going to be voting?" That's what we mean by round robin, okay? So don't do that either telephonically or by email. Now, you can, the chair or any individual planning commission member can call and individually find out how each of the members are going to be voting, but they can't communicate that to anyone else. Okay? that to anyone else, okay? So, probably best to just not even do it, if you can, but I understand that things are difficult, and if it's a controversial issue, you know, that may be something that's employed. I don't recommend it, but if you're going to do it, just be very careful that you don't communicate what someone else is going to be saying. Open to the public means anyone can come in, you can't restrict it to residents or non-residents, anyone can come in, and not only can they come in, they can record, televise, videotape, broadcast, you know, whatever. They don't have to tell you that they're doing it either. We've had examples of persons who have come in with transcription, they've been transcribing, you know, from here, they bring in their transcription equipment, because when you see that, we know a lawsuit's coming, so it's kind of helpful to us, but, you know, and it's also, we're going to tell you, we're going to give you the heads up, hey, they've got, if you ever see transcription equipment, document, 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 okay? So, so just, just be aware of that. You cannot restrict to residents only, but you can ask them for their address, and you guys do a great job of that, you ask them to put their address in, because it's important that you know where they come from, it's important that you know where they are in relation to the rezoning, and that's why you can ask for their address. You can't really demand it, you can't keep them from speaking if they don't provide it, but you can certainly ask them. And again, err on the side of caution, let them speak if they're here, but you can, you know, put rules on it, you can limit the time, you can, you know, you can have it at the beginning of the meeting, you can say, "We've got 20 minutes for public comment, that's all we're going to have on this one," you can say, "It's three minutes." Recommendation is, if you make the rule in advance, and do not make your decision based on what the content is. The subject matter, do not, you know, if you don't like a particular individual, or you don't like their opinions, err on the side of giving them more time than anyone else, because that's going to be the basis of an OMA complaint. You can try and avoid disruption, but always try and give them a warning, and the chair really has a critical role with this, you know, always try and give them a warning before you take any adverse action. And, you know, again, the purpose of the meeting is not to be offensive, but it's really to discuss, you know, the public's business. But unfortunately, I cannot protect you from criticisms of how you're doing your job, or criticism, you know, that's just, that's just part of it. You are a public official now, and there may be others who will criticize you, and unfortunately, if it's related to your job performance, that will come in. If it's related to something completely unrelated, you know, then you might, the chair has a lot of latitude in saying, "Can we please just, you know, let's talk about, you know, we really don't need to have personal attacks here, this is really not the forum we're here to do business." Okay, closed sessions, very rare, but they are permitted, if it's a, if I have a privileged and confidential memo, that's going to be able to, we're going to be able to go into a closed session with that. It does require two-thirds of the public body, though, to do it under that exception. There are others, other exceptions where it's just a majority, but that one is going to be a two-thirds vote. Anybody can bring a lawsuit for an OMA challenge, and there are kind of two, two types of challenges, they can invalidate a decision, or they can try and invalidate a practice. For example, if we don't have public comment on our agenda, they can file a lawsuit, trying to make sure that we do that at their future meetings. They, you can, if there's a decision that's enacted and it's bound to be a violation of the OMA, you can reenact it, it'll be effective as of the date of the reenactment. So, you know, again, it's just one of those things, if that happens, you may want to do that to reduce the amount of attorney fees and costs, which is something that they can collect if they have a successful OMA. And I guess I have to do a parentheses or a cop, one typo there, so I'll fix that before I have to do that. And then just briefly, the Freedom of Information Act. Not only do you have to have open meetings, but every, you know, all of the paper, all of the work that you do is subject to the Freedom of Information Act. So, again, as we were talking earlier about, you know, writing, and it's very broadly defined, photographs and drawings, and, you know, it basically is anything that's kind of reduced to writing, and if it's in the possession of, prepared by, owned, or used by a public body in the performance of an official function. So, if we have it, we've got to, we've got to produce it. And the important thing on this one is that it could include letters, text messages, or emails, even if they are on your private devices, if you are using those for a public purpose, then it, then we could have a potential FOIA violation. If that happens, what I would recommend is if you get, you know, requests, first of all, maybe you're saving them in a separate file or something, maybe you're kind of segregating them. I know at the attorneys, you're going to not want your computer to be inspected by somebody and have it be a part of a FOIA lawsuit, because you didn't produce something. So, you know, so there are a couple of different options that you have, you could, you know, if there is a FOIA that is filed and they're asking for all emails and everything, you can forward them all hopefully to Brent or Kathy or I or IT, somehow we can do that, you can forward them so that you don't have to retain them, or, you know, you can just put them on a disk. You know, again, we're going to try and protect your personal computers from, you know, from being, you know, from being revealed, but the best way to help us do that is to produce documentation, whatever is requested. So if we have a bunch of information, if we have emails or text messages, and we produce it, then it's likely that they're going to be satisfied with that. But we will work with you if we get a FOIA, I see every FOIA that comes to the City of Troy, and so, you know, we will work with you if we, if we see a request like that, and we'll kind of help you through that, through that process.
Are you required to save your emails? And that's, that's always a judgment thing, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, it is. Yes, I'm a conservative here, yes, you should be saving emails that are in the performance of your job duties, and that are substantive, okay? So if it's, "I'm not going to be at the planning commission meeting, you know, on this date," then, you know, that's not substantive. Also, you don't have to duplicate what you get from Brent, because Brent's going to have a copy of that, and Kathy, I mean, whatever they have, they're going to have copies of that. So you don't have to duplicate that, so you wouldn't have to say that if it's a duplicate of what city administration has. But yeah, the short answer is, we'd love you to keep it all. Reality, I understand that it's probably not practical, but, so, I would certainly save everything for at least three years. And again, not the non-substantive stuff, but if it's something that relates to the, you know, your, your performance as a planning commissioner, that Brent will not have, then you should, you should keep it. I'm imagining that that's going to be nominal, I mean, I can't imagine that there's going to be a whole lot of stuff that Brent or Kathy is not going to have, because you're going to forward all of the citizens' comments to them, they're going to be in your packet. So, you know, I'm just, I'm guessing that there's not really going to be a whole lot of information there, okay? So, and the public body has a burden of justifying the exemption, always. There are time limits for FOIA, we only have five days to respond, if we get a request, we can ask for 10 additional days, sometimes we can get longer than that, if it really is going to be a very voluminous search. And so that, there are some exceptions, Mr. Tagle, you had asked about exceptions, you know, you don't have to provide records that detail security or safety measures, public visits are another example, those are exceptions, there are several exceptions to FOIA, we will go through them all, you know, when we, if we get a specific request, and we'll see if any of them are applicable, and if there are documents that we shouldn't be producing, but my experience is that we are better off to give the documentation if we have it, because again, shows that we're transparent, we don't have anything to hide, here they are, and we avoid the substantial attorney fees that they would get if you have a, if you have one of these lawsuits. And I will just also tell you, the government always has a very difficult time when it's an OMA or a FOIA case, because they're, they're, they're going to presume the worst about the government, and they're going to hold us to a much higher standard, so they want everything as possible, they want everything. And again, this one, FOIA can be enforced by the Attorney General, County Prosecutor, or anyone, any citizen can file, and of course, they get their attorney fees recovered if they, if they are successful, and then they also get some penalties. If it's intentional, if it's an intentional violation, there's also potentially some damage, you know, some individual liability, and that was, not only for the, for the community, but also for the individual if it's intentional, so that will never happen, so, so, okay? And that's, I took a little longer than what I thought, but, but thank you for giving me the opportunity to come here, there may be questions that arise, or there may be some suggestions that you have before we give it to others, because again, I'm relying on you, you guys, you know, are the experts here, so, so if there are things that you think would be helpful for others to know, or be helpful to put on the webpage, or be helpful for council, please, you know, please let me know, and I'd be happy to incorporate them before we distribute it. Thanks again, again, I brought, I brought Candy just kind of as a bribe for you to listen to me, so, so thank you again for inviting me.
And if any questions come up afterwards, email me, I can go, Lori, I can email you back.
Exactly.
Lori.
Respond.
Supposing the planning commission has approved a site plan by a split vote? Can we just comment on how appropriate it is for the people who already know, you know, and your comment about supporting the final decision of the planning commission? How appropriate that is for that individual to go in front of the planning commission, or the city council, rather, and speak against it? I find that kind of ethically flawed.
It's a, it's a delicate situation, because again, you know, your, hopefully, your minutes will, will detail what your objections are, and hopefully, the minutes will have all of that information, so you wouldn't really have, there's really no additional benefit to going before city council, because the minutes are going to be reflecting it all. And again, I would much rather have it in writing, in the minutes, in a written document, than to have the oral, the oral representation, so...
The planning, see, the planning commission has a policy, if you cast a no vote, then you're allowed the opportunities to why that occurred, following that, so that, that could be your documentation, as to why we're opposed.
Right, yeah, and hopefully, that's enough. It is, again, if somebody does, if, maybe even if it's not even tactically wrong, there are some that will be critical of a planning commissioner coming in front of city council, you know, there are some that will be critical of that. So, again, put it in the, in the minutes if you can, that's probably the best place to put it in there. Beforehand, absolutely, I mean, here, everything else, again, it's better if you have it done in advance, I, you know, I realize that sometimes that's not possible, things might be brought up at the planning commission meeting that you didn't have the benefit of, and you really thought about it later on, and you, and you wanted to, you know, to add it. I guess my recommendation at that point would be to supplement the planning commission record, and to send it to Brent and say, "Hattie's thought, you know, this was brought up at the meeting, I'd like you to convey this with, you know, just as a supplement to the planning commission records." And I think, you know, perhaps if you do it that way, maybe that accomplishes, you know, the objectives of getting the information to council. Okay, all right, great. Any questions, let me, you know, feel free to contact me or contact Brent, and thank you for your attention.
Item eight is the planning commission training, oh, I'm sorry, I just did that.
Should we start again?
No, no.
I'm listening, wait, no problem.
Items on, public comment for items on the current agenda, I see that there is no one in the audience, and then now we'll go to planning commission comment, and Mr. Senzika, let's start with you.
Just a couple of comments, interesting note, I was at the commercial property at, down the road where the AT&T store was, and I understand that they're renovating their store, you know, because they were getting any foot traffic, because no one could see the operation from Big Beaver, that's exactly what we talked about, the thing. Very interesting, I go to that destination next to Alphalax, so obviously, I'm a short guy, and I need to go to smaller places, but there, that place also doesn't have any windows that go to the front, so it's, was happy to see it was a business reason that he did that, and was happy to see it was for a good reason that we talked about before. The other comment I had, just a brief comment, is that going to the Somerset Mall or some of the other malls, I see this valet parking, I brought that up before, I think the Grand City Day, a large area destined for valet parking, and it's always empty, and here we are, you have to walk a half a mile to get to it, if you don't want to use valet parking. And I don't know if that's in the ordinance, or is there a requirement that, you know, suggests that you can only have so many spots for valet parking, or, because I think it's really burdensome, it's really not good for public, you know, public welfare.
What I don't understand about valet parking is, why do they always get the spots next to the door? Are we paying them to run out to the back 40 to get the car?
Exactly.
It seems, it seems counterproductive to have your valet close to, like you said.
Yeah.
You're giving them car keys, they could park a mile away, you don't care.
But when you valet park, you expect prompt service, you expect them, so if you tell them, they could only park out in the outer regions, then that slows down the service speed.
Right, I know, but when my valet guy, as nice as he might be, only has to walk three feet to get my car to me, I'm like, "Oh, really? Really?"
To answer your question, the ordinance is silent on.
Really?
Yes.
I just feel it's inappropriate, they have 100 spots set aside for valet parking on a small parking lot, or some, you know, some number like that. It just seems inappropriate, and it's unfair to the citizens, when you, especially when you review the site plan, and you look at the number of parking spaces required, and here we have all these unused valet spots that are set aside for valet parking, it just doesn't seem reasonable, something to think about.
Yeah, that's, as Lori said, the planning commission speaks through their ordinance or their resolutions, so you might change it.
And I just wondered, you talked about the transit center, we got, obviously, we've got order of possession.
Yes, August 15th, we got the order of possession.
Has, has the order come across for the evaluation of the property yet?
The, yeah, they, the order of compensation was based on our appraisal, our independent appraisal, of a million fifty, so that's what has been paid, and that's what gave us the order of possession.
You're reprising it, aren't you?
We have our appraisal, I'm sure the Grand Saco will be doing their own.
Who's going to be hearing on the evaluation?
That's what will ultimately, could ultimately be said of a jury, is what the actual million property is.
Thank you.
Mr. Shupkey.
Yes, it's exciting to see people, applicants, coming before the planning commission and wanting to develop these unused properties we've had sitting around, many of them have become an eyesore, and to see viable businesses going there, it really makes you proud to be a citizen of Troy, so it makes you feel good, so I appreciate being part of the process.
Mr. Stratt.
I would, thank Lori, she did an excellent job, as usual. The other thing I was going to mention is, seeing that sculpture is actually coming up to fruition here, I appreciated that, and I saw debates going up for a while, and I was wondering when, but when you're in Big Beaver, and you're going north or west, and you're going 25 miles an hour.
25?
Yeah.
It's at 10 o'clock at night.
You can't often stand, that's it.
Did you like how it looks?
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty cool.
Yeah, I liked the light, I haven't seen a light, is it, do they have a light?
I haven't seen a light.
Do they have plans to light it?
I don't recall, now that I think about it.
In front of progress, you know.
Yes. Mr. Tagle.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Gottlieb?
No, Cameron.
One quick thought, there is tomorrow night, the one-stop event, one-stop-ready, correct, thank you, event the county's holding for us to attend, I just want to remind everyone that they have the time, it's 6:30 till 8:00, they do serve dinner at 6:00, so we have the 6:00 to 6:30 for a nice little box dinner, and... And one, one last point on that, the last one I attended, they had, they brought up your subject about the confidentiality of documents, and the speaker emphasized that one of the biggest failures of developments to happen is because someone leaked out what's going to happen before and it spoiled the project. So thank you for bringing that up again.
Kathy.
Thank you.
Ms. Cruz.
If, if we can't do anything about all the orange barrels, I've got nothing to say.
That's never going to happen. Mr. Seb.
I have, I got nothing.
Chairman, I, because I have one more. I just wanted to point out there's going to be a meeting at 7 o'clock at the community center on Thursday to talk about the Great Lakes Water 3.
Right.
The deputy county commissioner, Jerry Poissons, and your, I bet it out, Lord Reese first one.
Mr. Demash.
Will be there, talking about what's proposed plan and where they're going. It's going to be really an interesting, interesting time.
And some real heavy lifting on that, and we thank all your efforts in support of that.
I can't take much of it. I regret for that, but it was a big, it's a big change.
Are you going to be there?
Will I be there? No, I'll be there, but I'm not going to do the presentation. Much better people, Kristen's than I am.
Lori, did you have anything?
Oh, I've talked enough tonight. I just want to make sure everybody did get, they handled them.
Well, I do thank Lori. I think she did an excellent job, as always, and I think we all learn from these presentations. The other thing, it's been raised before in terms of the Big Beaver standards, design standards, and I still, and I know the businesses themselves, I know both Bonefish and Paradas, they have a real problem too with not, not having an entrance from the parking lot side or entrance to go there. And it's one of our favorite restaurants, especially Bonefish. And we've been there several times, which is really one of Michigan's torrential downpours and lightning and the whole works. And you have to walk considerable distance, even if you're parking a handicap. So I'm wondering if this is, I don't know if this is appropriate for the ordinance or if this is appropriate for the master plan update, but I think we should have some discussion about whether or not there should be an entrance on the parking lot side. You know, we, we encourage these businesses, I've talked to the managers, especially at Bonefish, they don't understand why they had to have an entrance on the Beaver side. They, they think they would have much rather had their entrance there. Well, that would have involved an entirely different site plan. And it's, they're at a point now where, I, I've seen people while I'm there where they've knocked on the emergency door, bridge to the exit door, and, you know, obviously their, their staff are going to let you, let you in there, but that's not a, you know, and it also creates a definite heat, you know, air conditioning problem in terms of, you know, if you open that door, then that's a new source of outside cold or, or heat. So I'm just, I, I think, I bet a lot of the businesses would like to see, would not object if we, we changed those design standards to having an entrance on both sides. Yes, Mr. Teague?
I, I think it's a matter of communicating. Somewhere along the line, our ordinance or the goals of our ordinance have been communicated to the people who are further down the line from site plan approval.
Right.
To design the store. So instead of picking out the standard prototype layout that they use all over the country, there needs to be some forethought. It was, it's totally mind-boggling to me how people could, whether it's the AT&amp;T store or the clothing store, all of those stores in there, how could they, how could they not think about the thousands, hundreds of thousands of people that pass their front door or the front of their building and not have it display their wares or their business? So I think it's a communication thing, and I think you've hit upon it, that maybe we need to be a little bit more proactive in explaining to them at this level, this is what we expect to see, that there's got to be accommodations for people that you're at the back of the store and at the front of the store.
Well, particularly with the restaurant, you know, that's, that's a major change in the, in the plan, where you put the kitchen and all that.
Absolutely.
But many restaurants that I've seen have a dual entrance, and you come in through the back and there, you know, maybe it's.
Carryout.
Four foot, no, it's a four-foot hallway back up to the reception area.
But it doesn't have to be that. What I'm saying is if somebody has a little forethought as to, these are the design parameters I have to design to, it'd be a different design.
Right. I think it's my, but we don't allow it, though, do we? And the ordinance doesn't say they cannot have an entrance in the back.
Correct.
It's what the petitioner submits.
Right. And we, and I know with Bonefish, we raised the whole location of their dumpster and being right along that sidewalk there and everything, which, which is a different issue, but, you know, I think with better planning, like you said, not using the cookie cutter approach that they, that some of these places do, they could have had, just evolved.
Well, there, there are limitations to that, though, and in all fairness, you know, some of the retailers have small lots and they have to have office space, so they're not going to put it on the side. It destroys their view, their ability, so they're going to have it somewhere. It's going to be at the back of the store. In this case, the back of the store is in front of our Big Beaver. That's the reason why they have that, and it's not because we're trying to promote, you know, walkability, but function, four of five is function. I mean, it's like forcing the people, trying to say, well, the church door is going to be facing the boulevard, but the parking lot's in the back and everybody sneaks into the church from the back. I mean, it just doesn't make sense sometimes. We're trying to force them, but it doesn't work. There's even a bank that has the same problem in the same center. There's a door to the, off the street, but it's all boarded up. They don't allow anybody to come through. We're forcing it by our ordinance. I guess we, they have to have a, a significant effort.
Different functioning front door, front something.
But they don't, it's off the parking lot.
I'm just curious, in the example that you were talking about, when you were out to eat and the monsoon came and you had to park in the back, how, what do you do if you're in a wheelchair? I mean, because your, your handicap spaces are in the back, and in inclement weather like that, we're taking handicapped people that are either wheelchair bound or in crutches and have the temporary placard and not giving them a way to enter into a building? That, that seems not A.D.A. compliant somehow. I mean, I, I know that it's not, but it just doesn't seem to make sense.
It is. Those parking spaces have to be close to the entrance.
No, but, but they've passed somehow, but they're still making them walk away.
There's no limitation, that's the whole.
The closest.
It just has to be the possible closest location, area.
But I think under Lori's example of we have to protect the public health, safety and welfare, there can be arguments made if somebody has to walk, you know, a certain distance or, you know, things like that. I mean, it just, it's not.
Our, our code does not preclude, does not prohibit the rear, the rear entrance. That, in that particular instance, I, I believe that was a, the designer could have done a better job of accommodating that entryway.
Well, the same thing is true at Paradas.
Same as that.
But our only word is states it has to be the major entrance.
It has to, no, it has to be functioning, a functioning entrance.
Well, we just passed the, the hospital, and that had to be a major entrance and, and Brent, that was a part of the presentation.
Agreed, but, but really, fortunately, the major entrance is, is the yellow door on the side. That's, but, but Big Beaver is, is a functioning door.
But no one's going to use it. I mean, it's not unusable.
I, I wouldn't say no one, because that, that would violate the ordinance, but it will be used.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Well, thank you, everyone. We do, we're.
Thanks, Lori, that was great.